We want to first welcome our candidates for District 89. And they are all up here. And our moderator is Barb Lyman, who is one of our best moderators. We're always very fortunate to have Barb as our moderator. A little bit about Barb. She joined the League of Women Voters in Wheaton in 2014. She's a past League president and has served as Voter Service Chair and on the Civic Education Committee. A former civics and psychology teacher, Barb currently co-chairs the League of Women Voters of Illinois Task Force on Miss and Disinformation and the Planning Board for the League of Women Voters National Institute for Civic Discourse. Barb lives in West Chicago.
Books serve more than one purpose today. As Deb said, my name is Barb Lyman, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Wheaton. And I live in West Chicago, so I will not be voting for any of the candidates who are on the dais today. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates for any kind of office. The League is not affiliated with any political party. The League's purpose is to promote civic responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government and civil civic discourse. Providing opportunities to meet candidates is a major mission of the League of Women Voters, so voters can become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. All candidates on the ballot have been invited today. Participating in today's forum for Community Consolidated School District 89 are Lindsay Cowles, Alex Maester, Stephen Newruffer, Ariel Stephens, and Laura Tyner. Did I get those close? Okay. The format for today is a forum and not a debate. Candidates are expected to accurately represent the facts, and their responses reflect their own views and opinions. All candidates today have signed and returned the ground rules by the deadline established in the invitation. The rules specify the format, time limits, broadcasting of the forum, and other rules related to the conduct of the forum. The candidates will begin in alphabetical order with their 90-second opening statement. They then will alternate the order in which they answer questions for 90 seconds. After the question portion of the forum, each candidate will give a 90-second closing statement, continuing our alternating pattern. A member of the League will be acting as timer, and I will enforce the time limits. Candidates, you will see a paddle to let you know when you have one minute, 30 seconds, then 15 seconds, and then stop. Should a candidate exceed the time limit, I will ask them to finish their sentence and move on to the next candidate. To ensure that the questions for today's forum represents a balance of topics, a panel of experienced members of the League of Women Voters has reviewed the questions submitted for appropriateness and to avoid duplication. Finally, I want to say how appreciative we are of the candidates who are not only willing to serve in office, but who agreed to be here today to share your ideas and goals. So let us get started. Candidate Cowles, you have 90 seconds for your opening statement.
Thank you so much. I'm Lindsay Cowles. I do just want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us today and for all of you for being here on a Saturday morning to engage in the work of maintaining our schools and our community. I am also honored to be on this impressive panel. I am proud to say, and I don't think this happens very often anymore, that they've all become my friends. So this has been a really wonderful experience. My husband, daughter, and I moved to Glen Allen in 2018. We became District 89 parents in 2022. My daughter is in Mrs. Hornig's second grade class at Parkview Elementary, and I'm a proud board member of the PTC at Parkview. I, we have come to love this community. They've become like our family. And so I'm excited to do anything I can to get back to this community. I am also come from a family of educators. I myself have been a teacher, a school and district administrator for the past 20 years. That threw me. I have been a part on the school side of creating and implementing policies that have transformed, created transformational results for students of all backgrounds. We are currently facing a context in which there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of federal policy, federal resources. We're also experiencing changing demographics in our school district and also navigating a post-pandemic context, which I think is going to put the board in a position to make some difficult and complex decisions that will require creativity and innovation. I think that my experience and my expertise provides a great deal of value to the board at this point. And so I look forward to sharing more with you this morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Candidate Maester, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Like Lindsay, I just wanted to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting today. Greatly appreciate it. And also, like Lindsay said, we have a great, oh, thanks, everybody, for coming today. And we have a great group of candidates here. So just to introduce myself, I'm Alex Maester. I lived, I lived in the district for six years. I've got little ones. So I've got a second grader and a kindergartner at Briar Glen. I've got a two-year-old at Chester Brook Daycare, so a future bulldog. So I'm in this for the long haul because I still have a lot of years to go. I decided to run because it was like November-ish, crazy time, and education was under the microscope. I really am passionate about public education and my own kids, and I wanted to make a difference. In my professional life, I'm a communications director for a school district. I currently work in Hinsdale 86 and prior to that in Aprilville 203, where I serve on the district leadership team. And I solve a lot of district-wide problems and work together with all different departments, from academics to human resources, finance, technology, et cetera. So I feel like I could use, you know, the skills and expertise and knowledge I've gained there to help solve issues in this district as a member of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Newruffer.
Hi, everybody. My name's Steve Newrutter. And again, thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting us. Thank you to the candidates for putting your name in the hat and running for our school district. And thank you for the audience for coming out this morning. I'm currently a school board member in District 89. And we moved, my family, wife, and three kids moved to Glen Allen in 2016. We moved here for the good schools. And so immediately, I wanted to get engaged with the community. And so I volunteered for many different committees within the school district, ended up co-leading the Operations Referendum 2018, and then joined the board in 2021. My background is, my education is in aerospace engineering. And I have an MBA as well. I have a bachelor's and master's in aerospace. And so what I do, I'm a small business owner. I'm a business and engineering consultant. And what I do is mostly in aerospace, but I also help small businesses develop strategies and operations to help them succeed. I'm running for the school board again because I think there's some things that we still need to accomplish. I think my expertise in business policy and strategy will really help continue the work that I've been doing. I've gave a lot of experience on the board already for four years, and I think I know how to protect our schools for the upcoming changes that I think are very real.
Thank you. Candidate Maester, your 90-second opening statement.
Hi. Thank you very much, League of Women Voters and the audience, for being here today. Like Lindsay said, this group of candidates is stellar in that I think we've been able to run a very civil and productive campaign together. I'm Ariel Stephens. I have a wife and three boys who live here with me in the district. We have a third grader, a fourth grader, and a sixth grader. I've intentionally chosen District 89 twice. I moved here for the first time in 2015. And work took me to Michigan. And then I came back and chose District 89 a second time. I wanted it because my son, my 10-year-old, is black. And I was looking for a community that would bring him diversity, but also a quality education. And it was important to me to find that, and I think I found it here. I've served three years on the PTC Board at Arbor View, twice as treasurer and once as secretary. I've been a classroom volunteer countless times. One of the things that was most important to me, we live right across the street from Arbor View, and it, sorry, it's throwing me too, Lindsay. And I made a conscious decision to take a work-from-home job where I could be present very often. In my day-to-day, I work for sales, in sales strategy for Good Foods. And I'm running because I'm committed to public education. I've experienced with multiple facets of the curriculum, having both a child with an IEP and a child on the advanced track. And Steve was very humble, but I want to continue the momentum of an award-winning board. And I think that that's very important here in the District 89 community. So thank you again for having me here, and I look forward to expounding more on some of these things as we move on.
And my apologies, candidate Stephens.
It's totally fine.
Candidate Tyner, your 90-second opening statement.
Good morning, and thanks so much for having me here today. My name is Laura Wilmarth Tyner, and I'm really pleased to be running for the school board. My kids have been enrolled in District 89 since 2014. My oldest is now a sophomore here at Glen Bar South, and I have a sixth grader at Glenn Crest Middle School. So professionally, I serve as the Director of the Lewis University Community Schools Consortium, where we focus with, in collaboration with P-12 schools, on implementing what's called the Community School Strategy, which is really about bringing increased resources to schools through collaborative and creative ventures. I decided to run for school board because I think public education is critical, and I want all learners to be able to access a high-quality education. I want to help create an inclusive and supportive community, which empowers all students and all families to thrive. I'm particularly motivated to collaborate with the district administrators and educators and local organizations as well to be creative, because I think we're going to need to be creative due to shrinking resources, due to the increased sort of demands for accountability that we're seeing. And also, a lot of diverse perspectives on school curricula. So as a parent, I want to support the great things that are already happening, and there are a lot. And I want to collaborate with others to really respond to the needs in our community. I particularly would like to think about things like the use of technology in our schools. There are some great things about that, and there are some real challenges. Wanting to support individuals with IEPs and 504 plans and empowering learners of all backgrounds to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first question will begin with candidate Maester. And here is the question. What do you feel is the most pressing issue or challenge in District 89? And how will you address this issue or challenge during your term as a school board member?
Thank you. So this is an issue that came up at the last school board meeting was class size. This is something that caught my attention because my kindergartner is in a class of 27, which just seems crazy to me. I could barely take care of my own three kids, let alone 27 kindergartners. So I started digging in and did some research and saw that our class sizes in District 89 are fairly higher than our nearby districts like Wheaton 200 and District 41 in Glen Allen. And so like the more I learned, the more I looked into it, and I saw it was at lower grade levels too. So our kindergartners and first graders are in lower class sizes. And at such a young foundational age, I think we need to make sure they're in sizes that are manageable, both for the teachers and for the kids, to allow them to learn. And looking into it more so, even in the teacher union contract, it says the kindergarten class size should be capped at 25. So within our agreement that we have with the teachers' union, I don't think we should be extending past 25. I don't think that's fair to the kids. I don't think it's fair to the teachers, and I don't think it's the best learning environment.
Thank you. Candidate Newruffer.
And so I think the biggest challenge that we have right now or coming up is potential fiscal issues. I think we may face a funding cut from the federal government, and that could impact low income and kids with IEPs and especially. So I think we need to prepare for that and figure out ways to combat that in the fiscal sense, but also in the strategy sense. Again, my background is within the business strategy, and I'm able to, and a lot of times it includes finance as well. And in my experience, I'm able to find creative ways for, to overcome challenges like this in business, even engineering sometimes. I think, you know, having run the, co-run the 2018 Operations Referendum, I also have a lot of experience in finding out what the community really wants and applying those strategies to bring to the district a good solution, the best solution that we can afford. I also think that there are other challenges that we need to think about as well. We have a large English learning population in our district that I think we should be creative in addressing those kids' needs because this is a public school district. And we need to address everyone's needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Stephens. What do you feel is the most pressing issue or challenge in District 89? And how will you address this issue or challenge during your term as a school board member?
Yes, thank you. It may come up later, but I think achievement gaps are an issue within the district. But specifically related to that, I think is the issue of chronic absenteeism. So in our district, chronic absenteeism impacts 17% of the students within the district. Granted, it's 26% at the state, so we're doing better than the state. But it's double from the 2018-2021 period prior to COVID. I think what we're seeing is that children are impacted by some socioeconomic factors, disabilities, English language, IEPs, low income, the homeless students. But I think that it is imperative that we come together to analyze the data and figure out why those students are not coming to school. Is it bullying? Are they bored with the curriculum? Is it a mental health epidemic? As a board member, much like Steve, with my business background and my analyzing data, I think we need to break this down and figure out what the root cause of this is so that we can ensure that students are not only coming to school, but are bringing their best selves every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Tyner.
So I think I want to start by saying that addressing issues wouldn't just be me, right? And I think that that's a really important piece of the answer to the problems that we're facing, and that is working together. And so I think that one of the first things I would want to think about is building coalitions within our community to respond to the issues we're facing. So I think that there's a real concern about resources in our community moving forward, that the school just doesn't have all of the resources needed to truly support every learner. There are a lot of needs presenting related to chronic absenteeism, mental health, a lot of different challenges that families are facing. And so I really want to think about how are we collaborating with other organizations in the region to think collaboratively and to think creatively about the resources we do have to work together? Are there unique and exciting ways that we can serve one another's purposes by working together? And so I think that the resources and the uncertainty are a significant challenge that we're facing. And I also think that we need to think about building community to support our schools more wholly. I don't think it can just be schools supporting our families. And so what can we do to bring additional members of the community in to support the schools together? I think it's one of those moments where we are better together.
Thank you. And candidate Cowles.
Thank you. I think I would agree with everything that's been said. And I think one of the ways to sort of think about all of the challenges that we're facing is change. We are experiencing a great deal of change in terms of the issues that our students are facing, chronic absenteeism, large class size. All of those things, I think, are a result of a lot of the change in terms of culture and context that we're operating inside of. And so I think we're also facing a shortage of funds and resources. I think we need to stop thinking about that as sort of how do we respond or react? And how are we proactive about how we set our systems up? How do we set our teachers up? How do we create these partnerships that we need to adapt to that change? I think this is a moment of real adaptation, evolution, that we need to plan for and not be surprised by. So for example, the changing class size, I think we know is a very complex issue. It is also a result of children moving into our district throughout the school year and not being able to plan for the proper class size for our students. And so how do we then think about that? And how do we plan for that going forward? I think the superintendent and the board is really thoughtful about that, but I think we really need to get concrete about what are we going to do about that? How are we going to set up our teachers so that that is not something that they're experiencing every day just as a surprise and that throws them off and that becomes really unsustainable for our teachers? How do we actually put the systems in place to be prepared for that change?
Thank you. And just a quick reminder to the candidates to make sure your microphones are turned on when you're speaking and that you speak into the microphone so the recording can pick up your answers for those who are watching later. Our next question is going to begin with candidate Newrutter. Although District 89 consistently performs well above average, statewide averages in IAR testing, Illinois Assessment Ready and Miss Testing, there are many challenges and barriers to academic achievement that span from chronic absenteeism to significant racial disparities in math test scores. So the question is this. How can District 89 School Board work to overcome these barriers? And how will you personally contribute to the solution? Candidate Newrutter.
Yeah, so one of the things that I've been trying to, I recognize these issues and it's something that we've been trying to address for longer than my tenure, for sure. And I think it's a work in progress. I would like to have made more progress so far, but we are where we are. I think one of the things that we need to do is identify kind of what the issues are, the underlying issues, that, you know, maybe the curriculum isn't matching with the students. Maybe, you know, the students need more support. It's either social, emotional, or maybe some family supports as well. We do have family liaisons that have been working very well with the district, and they're one of the best programs that we have with the district. And very helpful getting people who are new to the community into the schools and engaged. But I think, I think in addition to that, really, one of my main things is to make sure that every kid that comes to our school feels safe and welcome. Because if they are not feeling safe and welcome, they are not able to really achieve their own potentials. And so we need to set up policies that protect them and make sure that the teachers know the path that we want to go on so that each kid can achieve their best.
Thank you. Candidate Stephens.
Thank you. I think it's important to note that IAR scores are up post-COVID in both ELA and math, with 60% of our students meeting or exceeding standards in ELA, with still only 40% in math. That's obviously concerning, I think, to a lot of parents in the district. So I think there are a lot of things that are imperative that we continue. For our special education students, we need to continue to create equitable classrooms and a commitment to fostering each student's growth and dependence. They need to be able to be challenged just like the rest of the students within the district. It's important that we set high expectations paired with tailored support for them and for our challenged students as well. I think that, in my opinion, one of the things that the board could do would be to figure out how to make summer school an annual program. I know that in prior years, in the COVID years, that there was a grant that funded it. It was immensely helpful to my 10-year-old, who's on an IEP, and I was disappointed that that program won't continue this year. There are ways that we can do this, be it tuition-based or some other creative solutions. But I think that more learning time for our vulnerable learners is critically important within our district. Thank you.
Candidate Tyner.
I think the first place to start is ensuring that we're creating inclusive and supportive school communities and also addressing policies, looking at our policies to determine that they're also inclusive and really designed to support all learners. But I agree with what Steve was saying. I think that we need to identify the issues really clearly. And I think that we need to use data to do that, but we also need to hear from, we need to hear community voice. And so that's from families, that's from students, to really understand their experiences in the district. And then with them, in collaboration with them, to begin to identify ways that we can respond and support our families and our learners more effectively. Because without having the resources that are going to allow folks to succeed, we can't, we can't set high expectations. And so I think that collaboration and really hearing more clearly what folks are struggling with would help us a lot.
Candidate Cowles.
Thank you. I certainly agree. I think we need to get to the root of the problem. We need to be grounded in the data to determine where our deficiencies really lie. I think it's important to note that our greatest achievement gap is actually with our students with IEPs, with students without IEPs. And we also, in addition to math proficiency, we also struggle in terms of growth. So while we're above the state in terms of proficiency, we're not necessarily seeing the growth of our students that we want to see. I really, I am someone who believes strongly in data and education. And one of the things that I've been really oppressed with Superintendent Icarius about is changing how we're looking at the data and then how we're responding to it. So he has implemented looking at students by incoming starting score so that we can think about students at different levels and cut the data in different ways to really identify who's struggling, why, where are they struggling, and also where are we doing well? So where in our district do we have teachers who are actually achieving the results we want to see? And then how are we leveraging that to share across the district? So I think just responding to the data and really being smart and intentional about then, how do we add instructional minutes? How do we add that instructional time in intentional ways that also keeps our fiscal, our budget in line? I think that's really important, and I don't think it's out of the question. I think it can be done.
Thank you. Candidate Maester.
Yeah, so first, I'd just like to say like yes to everything. That's the downside of going last, is you guys stole all my good points. But I think it's also important to note that, like, as a board member, you have a role, and it's a role to govern. And I want to point out, like, I'm not an educator. And, you know, I've been to hundreds of school board meetings, and I've seen boards who get too far into the weeds, thinking they know how to educate kids when they don't. And I've seen the other side. I've seen boards who are hands-off and just say yes to everything. So I think recognizing that I'm not an educator is important, where I, you know, I'm not passing on the question and I'll offer a solution. But I also would support our administrators and any board members, maybe educators, and listen to the community, people who know what they're doing, people who know how to solve problems like this, because I don't think I'm the best suited to solve this problem. But one thing that I have noticed, and I believe racial disparities was part of your question, I think our staff needs to look more like our kids. When I just walk around the halls, I see a very diverse student body. I see them in my kids' class. I see my kids' friends who come over. And our teachers don't look like that. So I think we need to make an effort to have a more diverse staff that looks like our kids because I don't know everything about education, but I know it benefits kids when they have people that look like them.
Thank you. Candidate Stephens, this question will begin with you. Technology has become an essential part of primary education's landscape. However, many parents are concerned about the negative effects of too much screen time on their students, including personal devices like phones and watches, but also on school-issued devices, such as iPads used by kindergarten students in the district. The question is this. How should the school board help families and educators to balance this tension both inside and outside of the classroom? Candidate Stephens.
Thank you. My three boys are here today, and they will tell you that I am one of the strictest parents when it comes to screen time. They have their fancy watches, and on their watches are chores that need to be completed every day. They need to get 10,000 steps before we can talk about that additional screen time because they do rely so heavily on their Chromebooks in the classroom. However, as somebody who works a business job and sits on a computer all day myself, I understand that there is a need for that. I played Oregon Trail on a computer back in elementary school. It did nothing to help me in my career. But in today's world, we know that technology is going to drive the futures of our children. It's going to drive the careers that they have. So I think we need to figure out how to embrace it in the right way. I know there are a lot of criticisms about something like an ST math program within the district. But I think that it's important to note that for my dyslexic learner, that sort of math-based program works well for him. So I think it's education that should come from the board. I also think that we need to evaluate the role of AI. I think AI is very scary to people, but I think there's age-appropriate exploration for AI. It's my understanding that Canva is something that is available on the student-issue devices. And Canva has a free AI image generator that allows students to visualize their assignments so they can speak into that some bullet points on characters that they're developing or something like that. So I think there are positive ways to integrate AI into the curriculum as well. So as a board member, I think that it's about listening to the community, understanding concerns, but emphasizing that this is the wave of the future. Thank you.
Candidate Tyner.
This is a hot topic in my household. We struggle a lot with devices. There are so many wonderful things to be gained through using technology. And I think that there are a lot of really wonderful skills that learn, that kids learn through being engaged on devices. But I also find that it can be really distracting, right? If you're supposed to be focused on a particular assignment in your classroom, it can be very easy, am I not close enough? It can be very easy for a student to become distracted by whatever it is is available. am I not close enough? It can be very easy for a student to become distracted by whatever it is is available on their device. And so I think what is most important as a board is continuing to educate ourselves and to create spaces where we can engage around this topic. I don't think that a school board alone has the answer. So can we talk with teachers? Can we talk with families to understand the benefits of using technology, but also the challenges that they're facing? And think together creatively about ways that we might do things different, where we can tap into technology as a tool and as a resource to help our students learn and grow, while also remembering that there is some real value to paper and pen and that, you know, we can benefit from taking time to learn through writing, for example. So I think really it's about taking on this new challenge by open dialogue to clarify together how to move forward.
Thank you. Candidate Kells.
I I agree. I think, like everyone knows, technology is wonderful and it's horrible all at the same time, and that is certainly true in education. I think our our kids absolutely need to learn how to navigate this world, including AI, and it can be really valuable. We also know that a child's brain is significantly impacted by technology. So I think it's really nuanced. I work in a district where we have banned cell phones, and we have very strict limits on when teachers should be using technology in the classroom. That is not necessarily the case or the desire of parents in our community, and that's okay. But I think our job as a board, similar to what others have said, is to navigate those different concerns of different stakeholders and then set policy that will create the conditions that we need to create in our classrooms for our teachers to do the work that they do. So I think our job is sort of a facilitator of that discussion and then to set the policy that needs to be in place that will meet the needs of our stakeholders.
Thank you. Candidate Meester.
Thank you. I think, you know, one job of a public school district and the board is to help parents parent a little bit, right? And they don't have to listen to us, but sometimes it's nice to give them the tools, and if they need some help, they're there. You know, I certainly need that sometimes as a parent. And so when this question first came up, I went to safety. Like when I worked in Naperville, we had kids who were playing video games at home. It doesn't sound like a school thing, but it gets there. I remember one instance where one kid told another kid that they didn't want to go to school tomorrow. So this other kid who lived in New York called in a gun threat the next day, and we had to deal with that. You know, we do with cyberbullying constantly, where friends who wouldn't say something to a friend in person put it out on Snapchat or social media or whatever. And that really has an impact on their lives outside of school, but in school too. It comes in school. So I think a lot of this digital citizenship, and it's important for the schools to monitor what's going on and to help parents understand that there's a need for them to monitor too. And then I'll just touch quickly on AI. I'm going through my MBA program online right now, and I previously got a master's in strategic communication. And just the way I am able to approach doing school as a student is completely different, and I can be way more efficient using AI. And I think it's important to teach kids how to use that to their benefit because it's not going away, and we'd be doing a disservice to our kids if we didn't teach them how to use AI.
Candidate Newer.
So the technology is moving way faster than, you know, every year it's going faster and faster. And so I think we have to incorporate technology into all facets of the student, you know, journey. And I think we we need to balance it, though. And I think our our teachers do a really good job of individualized lesson planning for school, for each of the kids. And I think there are some nuances there that I think we should explore and as as we bring in more technology like AI and look to the future because some some kids might learn better with us more screen time. Some are less affected by adding more screen time, and some some kids are more affected. So we kind of, I think we should put in place some kind of, make sure that the policies are there so that so that we don't have distractions within the schools, but also allow for the teachers to have this individualized lesson planning that includes technology. I know there are school, legal limits for the schools to address some of the outside issues that that technology causes. And I think our school district as well does operate well with that. And, you know, part of the, part of being a board member is just making sure the school continues to be legally smart about that as well.
Thank you. Well, that was our last question, and I apologize to the audience and the community that if we did not get to your question, but I'm sure the candidates will make themselves available to answer any specific question that you might have. So let's begin our closing statements, and it will be Glenn with candidate Tyler.
All right, thank you. Well, I want to just start by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting this today and for all of you for showing up on Saturday morning at eight-thirty in the morning. I appreciate your commitment to our community. I think it's really important to have these conversations. As you cast your ballot on or before April first, I hope you'll consider some of my previous experience in working with schools, my commitment to students and family thriving, and my dedication to creating a community where each learner and family member feels welcomed and valued. And I think that's a really important piece of the work we need to do. I really look forward to working with other members of the board, folks here in this team, along with educators and parents, to creatively think together and to collaborate, to identify ways to best serve our students and our learners. I think that we really can do our best work when we're listening to one another and understanding the experiences of all of the different members of our community to best support all of our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Candidate Kells, your closing statement.
Thank you again, everyone, for for being here and for being a part of this, for being a part of the community. One of the things that I feel like we haven't talked a whole lot about today are really specifically the teacher experience. And I think of myself very much first and foremost as a teacher. And as a teacher on the school side of things, I always appreciated board members who acted in an advisory role, who listened to everyone, to community members, but also teachers and students and parents, and helped to create, helped to create the conditions that I needed to do my best work. And so I hope to be that board member for our teachers, for our parents, for our students. And I hope that you'll consider me as you go vote before April first. And again, thank you to this wonderful group of people who I've gotten to know and just continue to enjoy working with this community and look forward to doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Meester.
Okay, so again, thank you to everybody for being here. Thank you to the League for hosting. I think throughout the forum, I've explained why my skill set would help me serve as an effective board member. I'm passionate about education. I have experience in working in school districts, and my background in communication would help me share the voice of the community at board meetings. I just wanted to say that in full transparency, when I decided to run, I was doing it almost selfishly for my own kids, right? Like I wanted to solve their problem and make sure that they had a good experience in school. But in the past few weeks and months, I've had the chance to talk to a lot of people and hear a lot of their issues and a lot of their struggles and a lot of the things they're dealing with. And now, like, it's kind of flipped. Yes, I'm still doing this for my kids. I'm not, of course, I'm doing it for my kids. But I'm also doing it for the teachers I spoke to and the other parents and the other kids and the other community members who have shared with me things that they want to see improve in the school district. So I hope to have the chance to do that and sort of alongside a lot of the people here and on behalf of the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Newer.
So thank you again to the League of Women Voters. Thank you for, the audience for showing up so early again. And then, yeah, just echo everybody else. I really appreciate this strong panel of candidates for our school district. I think no matter what happens, we're in, we're in a good position, and that doesn't always happen. So I really appreciate everybody putting the time and the effort in. You know, for me, school district, public school district is the cornerstone of every community. And I think you need to ensure that that cornerstone is well-funded. It hires the best teachers. The teachers have the right curriculum to use. And we provide that welcome and safe environment for the kids. And and that's what I've been trying to do for the last four years, even before that with the Operations Referendum. You know, I think we've been successful in communicating with each other in the school district and within the community. And I really think we have a community that values what we have in the school districts right now. And I want to keep working to improve it. There's definitely challenges that we face all the time, and I think we've got some big ones coming up. And I think it's going to take some working together to get through these challenges. But I know for a fact, having knocked on many, many, you know, hundreds, maybe thousands doors in my many years, that the community really does care about the school district and I'm here to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Stephens.
Thank you again, everybody, for being here today. It was truly a pleasure. You know, I just want to close on my goals for District eighty-nine. Quality education for all, students and teachers first, transparent policymaking and responsible budget decisions. And I want to touch most closely on a quality education for all. This is something I've been asked a lot about. As a member of the LGBT community, I truly mean all students. I think when we were here two years ago for the last board elections, there were a lot of louder voices in the opposition. I think one of the downfalls to the slate is that we're also very closely aligned. We sit up here and we echo each other's thoughts. But I think we would be naive to believe that we don't need to continue to bridge community relations when it comes to truly evaluating what diversity and inclusion means in District eighty-nine. And I'm passionate in figuring out how to bridge that divide so that we get there. You know, as a as a community member who's very involved, like Steve said, I think one of the things that we do benefit from is a very involved parent community. And I think that not only do all the students deserve a voice, but so do those parents. And so I think it's upon us as we move forward here to continue to listen to all voices. But with that said, you know, again, thank you for being here. As you cast your ballot, I think we've given you a lot of really great things to think through. So thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in thanking the candidates for being with us. Our democracy tribe is so engaged. Attending or watching a candidate forum is an excellent way to be empowered to join discussions on local issues and make your voice heard on Election Day. We hope each and every one of you will vote and inspire your family and friends and neighbors to do the same. Information on how and when to vote can be found at illinoisvoterguide.org and the League of Women Voters of Glen Allen website and social media. We hope that you will take advantage of early voting, which started March seventeenth, since Election Day, April first, falls during spring break. Recording of this forum will be posted in its entirety on the League of Women Voters of Glen Allen website, lvwge.org. So thank you again to the candidates and best of luck on the campaign trail. Thank you.